या मातानवम ओह जय राधे जय कृष्णा जय वृंदवान रस्सीकाम खुद्दा मांगी जय गोपिगान ओ रस्सीकाम खुद्दा मांगी जय गोपिगान मैं सोह वही साचारी राधे रानी की मैं सोह वही साचारी राधे रानी की नित्य धाम वृंदवान महारानी की ओ नित्य धाम वृंदवान महारानी की ओ महारानी की महारानी की महारानी की नित्य धाम वृंदवान महारानी की ओ ओ जय राधे जय कृष्णा जय वृंदवान रस्सीकाम खुद्दा मांगी जय गोपिगान नित्य धाम नित्य सेवा नित्य पाना सोया राखरूचि सोई जोई ताकुरानी की राखरूचि सोई जोई ताकुरानी की ओह जय राधे जय कृष्णा जय वृंदवान रस्सीकाम खुद्दा मांगी जय गोपिगान ओ रस्सीकाम खुद्दा मांगी जय गोपिगान जय राधे जय कृष्णा जय वृंदवान रस्सीकाम खुद्दा मांगी जय गोपिगान राधे राधे राते श्याम राधे राधे श्याम चार राधे श्याम युगल नाम मेरो हे जीवन राधे श्याम युगल नाम मेरो हे जीवन ओह जय राधे जय कृष्णा जय वृंदवान रस्सीकाम खुद्दा मांगी जय गोपिगान मेरो एक प्राणाधना एकाही हे जीवन नंदनंदन माधन मोहन राधिकर्म ओ नंदनंदन माधन मोहन राधिकर्म
हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा वैंकर सत्यनारायण प्रभुजी हरे कृष्णा
हरे कृष्णा प्रभुजी
how are you प्रभुजी?
yeah yeah fine fine
हरे कृष्णा पल्लवी माता जी thank you for joining how are you?
हरे कृष्णा सिन्हा जी I am good how about you?
yeah yeah doing fine thank you thank you very much so माता जी your husband also there I just want to see him
no actually I joined from his phone
okay okay I just want to see him since you are sincere easy say easy
yeah yeah I can show him maybe
yeah yeah how are you? unable to unable to hear you mute you are on mute
I am good how are you?
yeah yeah doing good thank you doing good very good how are you how is everything?
yeah everything is good
yeah I got to know that you are working in IBM
yes yes wonderful
I work for IBM which technology प्रभुजी?
I work on data stage primarily
data stage wonderful very good
yeah it's it's a detailed tool
which location?
mind space location
mind space okay your wife is regularly attending she is very
yeah yeah I know
she got
I know
she is a
yeah
she also knows some of the Bhagavad Gita Bhagavatam topics she is sincere
I I saw some some messages in the association group of the colony is it the same?
ah same same same
okay okay
that's why it is he is one of my friend he lives in Panchavati Colony
okay
we live in here nearby Harivellu Apartments
okay okay because I saw a different name there it wasn't Srinivas there so I thought
my athlete
I wasn't sure it's the same or a different one
same same actually in our Iskhan Guru Parampara when we take initiation when we take dixie they will give spiritual
okay okay okay
thank you प्रभुजी I will start my session thank you very much
yeah thank you nice talking to you
thank you माता जी right let me share my screen Divya Akka thank you for joining this is the first time my sister is there पल्लवी माता जी and Venkata Venkata Sathyananap Prabhuji my brother Venkata Ramna Prabhu is not able to join today because he just moved from and that's why he is unable to join maybe then next session in Sunday or another thank you Akka
hello Divya जी हरे कृष्णा
yeah yeah
हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा to everyone
yeah yeah हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा show me your face once to everyone
yeah yeah one one second
right right thank you
bye to Kuchan can you see that?
ah Akka
yeah so
thank you
so you your own sister?
my own sister yeah second sister
oh okay oh great
they live in
namaste
yeah they live in here
namaste Andy
namaste namaste
yeah yeah
they live in Ramantapur
जय श्री कृष्ण
okay okay
actually they spend they spend twenty twenty-five more close to twenty-five years in Nagpur after her she got marriage you know they moved to Nagpur and recently my brother in my brother in he got job in here in Hyderabad so they moved back to Hyderabad they live in Ramantapur
okay okay
thank you Akka thank you for joining yeah we will start
okay okay I'll leave it I'll leave it
thank you thank you first time she is joining so that's good
जय राधा माधवा कुंजा बिहारी जय राधा माधवा कुंजा बिहारी गोपीजन वल्लभा गिरिवरधारी गोपीजन वल्लभा गिरिवरधारी तेषोदनंदना प्रजजन रंजना तेषोदनंदना प्रजजन रंजना यमुना पीरा वनचारी यमुना पीरा वनचारी जय राधा माधवा कुंजा बिहारी गोपीजन वल्लभा गिरिवरधारी तेषोदनंदना प्रजजन रंजना यमुना पीरा वनचारी यमुना पीरा वनचारी जय राधा माधवा कुंजा बिहारी गोपीजन वल्लभा गिरिवरधारी तेषोदनंदना प्रजजन रंजना यमुना पीरा वनचारी यमुना पीरा वनचारी हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे हरे जय राधा कुंजा बिहारी राधा कुंजा बिहारी राधी जय राधा व्रंदावन चंद्र राधा व्रंदावन चंद्र राधी जय राधा गोपीनदा साधा गोपीनदा राधी जय राधा गोपीवल्लभा साधा गोपीवल्लभा राधी जय राधा माधन मोहन साधा माधन मोहन राधी जय गौरानिताय जय गौरानिताय गौरानिताय जय गौरानिता जय प्रभुपदा जय प्रभुपदा प्रभुपदा जय प्रभुपदा जय गुरुदेवा जय गुरुदेवा गुरुदेवा जय गुरुदेवा इत्ताय गौरा हरिबोर 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 इत्ताय गौरा हरिबोर इत्ताय गौरा हरिबोर 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 इत्ताय गौरा हरिबोर
श्रीला प्रभुपद की जय श्रीला गुरुदेव की जय ताय गौर प्रेमानंदे हरि हरिबोर yeah we will start with this thank you Raju Prabhu joining right thank you Raju Prabhu so we will start this let me share again this screen हरे कृष्णा प्रभुजी yeah हरे कृष्णा प्रभु थैंक यू so you are you can invite your friend Prabhu Saravan Prabhuji if he is available
Shrikanth Prabhu
ah Shrikanth Prabhu sorry I forgot again
okay we will call Prabhu
we will call Prabhu you can give the meeting details and it's a it's important actually
yeah sure sure
we are going through the Shrimad Bhagavatam and its contents it's overview session it's better to know
okay
good information
yeah I will call now
right right thank you Prabhuji right we will start with this let me share again ओम ज्ञानाति मिरांदस्य ज्ञानांजना शलाकया चक्षुर्मिलितम्येना तस्मै श्री गुरवे नमः नमावोम् विष्णुपादाया कृष्णप्रश्नाय भूतले श्रीमते बक्तिरे दांत स्वामीनिति नामिने नमस्ते सरस्वतीदेवे गौरवाणी प्रचारिने निर्विशेषा शुन्यवादी पास्चार्यदेशतारिने वांछाकल्पतरु व्यस्ताकृपा सिंधुप्य एवचा पतितानापावनेप्यो वैष्णवेप्यो नमो नमः जय श्री कृष्णा चैतन्य प्रभु नित्य अनंद श्री अद्वैतागदाधारा श्रीवासाधी गौरभक्त वृंद हरे कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे 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 कृष्णा हरे कृष्णा 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 हरे 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 रामा हरे रामा 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 हरे हरे ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय ओम नमो भगवते वासुदेवाय नारायणम् नमस्कृत्यम् नरम् चैवानरोत्तमं देविम् सरस्वतिम्यासं ततो जयं उदीरयेत शुन्वताम् स्वाकता कृष्णा पुण्यश्रवणकीर्तय इर्तना हृदयं तास्तोहि अबद्राणी विदु नोती सूष्टाम नस्त प्रायेषु अबद्रेषु नित्यम् भागवत सेवय भगवते बुत्तमस्लोके बक्तिर्भवति नैष्ठिकी मोकम् करोति वाचालं पंगम् लंगायते गिरिंगत कृपातम हम्मंदे श्री गुरुंदीनतारिनम् परमानंदमादम् श्रीचैतन्य मिश्वरम् हरे कृष्णा so thank you so much for all of you joining and dedicating your this time Friday evening Friday evening you all have many other things to do but you are giving such a valuable your time to spending to know more about this Shrimad Bhagavatam most of you heard you know from childhood and from you know in the school time and in your college time maybe in your jobs time whenever you you get a chance to hear there is a book called there is a scripture called Bhagavatam right so so this is the actually all vedic literature as we gone through different sessions right in such a happiness faith in scriptures three modes of material nature who is god does god exist right so different sessions we have gone through and we have reached the level of tenth session we have reached now so so why we are keeping this session so basically in previous session we discussed about the two thing two holy books if you at least if you touch you become auspicious because that is the power of the holy scriptures Shrimad Bhagavatam and Shrimad Bhagavat Gita right Shrimad Bhagavatam is more about Krishna whereas Bhagavat Gita spoken by Lord Supreme Personality of God and Shri Krishna at the outset and the battlefield of the Kurukshetra whereas Shrimad Bhagavatam it is also difficult situation two personalities the conversation between two personalities okay Sukhadeva Goswami and Parikshit Maharaj okay so these two personalities it is also conversation it's also conversation and explaining about more about the pastimes about the Supreme Personality of God and Shri Krishna so and in our group every day I am putting different posters about the Shrimad Bhagavatam the importance of Shrimad Bhagavatam you know why we have to read because as a as we are devotees of Supreme Lord Krishna so why we have to understand this Shrimad Bhagavatam what exactly their inside what are the contents and what are the information as Vyasadeva has given to us in a book format like you know it was actually in all previous yugas people are so much memory one when one time they hear when we when we when they hear one time it will remember they don't need any book format they don't need any palm leaves you know then because there is memory is like that in previous ages like you know Dwapara Yoga Threeta Yoga Satya Yoga right three yugas now we are situated in the Kali Yoga Kali Yoga is the diminishing day by day way all good qualities diminishing hypocrisy quarrel all bad things you are experiencing right in day to day life so and one of the bad qualities is loss of memory the diminishing we cannot remember what happens three days ago what we ate three days ago we can immediately we cannot remember and yeah what happens in last year in this exact time what we did because of the forgetfulness that's because of the memory we don't have that kind of memory so that's the reason that's the reason Shri Laya Vyasadeva compiler of the and compiler of Shrimad Bhagavatam is written in a book format it's in the farm leaves and eventually now in a paper format during the course of time right so Bhagavatam is essential book for the for the persons who seek self-realization who looking for self-realization who understand about the purpose of life these two books Shrimad Bhagavatam and Shrimad Bhagavat Gita and two books always talks talks about Supreme Personality of God it right Shri Bhagawan who in Bhagavad Gita we have seen Shri Bhagawan who watch Bhagawan who watch Krishna says Bhagawan who last last week we discussed who is Bhagawan who possesses six opulences right who is unlimited unlimited name unlimited forms what is that fame name of wealth strength all six qualities is there that's why it's called Bhagawan who possesses six opulences name fame strength renunciation knowledge beauty so these are the six things so and Bhagavatam is about that personality different different pastimes we are going to go through each each of the body exactly inside there okay so let me quickly share this PPT again one more time right so here so look at here so this is the Bhagavatam the basically what exactly Bhagavatam it's a it's a twelve cantor books twelve cantos eighteen thousand verses written Shri Laya Vyasadeva actually why he has come up with Shrimad Bhagavatam because see he has composed all the vedic literature like you know four vedas Rukveda Ezhurveda Samaveda Atharvaneveda four vedas he has compared and one hundred and eighty Upanishads hundred and eighty Upanishads he has compiled also eighteen Puranas compiled according to the level of consciousness he has given and you know different levels of consciousness that different Puranas existed we've gone through in previous session right so you got the point so eighteen Puranas hundred and eighty Upanishads for vedas and Upavedas Vedangas so he has written everything but again he dissatisfied with the after compilation of all the vedic literature he dissatisfied Asantrukta he got dissatisfaction even though compiled all this literature why he got dissatisfied no we will discuss so basically I mean basically we will discuss these topics you know different topics discussion advent of Shrimad Bhagavatam how it existed different tracks who is Parikshit Maharaj Maharaj Parikshit went to the banks of Vanges how and why Shrimad Bhagavatam descended on earth what is the purpose of why Shrimad Bhagavatam descended and who is the Sukhadeva Goswami what were the questions of Parikshit Maharaj and contents of Shrimad Bhagavatam it's a different and what exactly all these twelve cantos what are the pastimes described we can quickly go through and glories of Shrimad Bhagavatam various Vaishnava Acharias given various realizations about the Shrimad Bhagavatam right so we will go through that with you so who is Parikshit Maharaj so basically does anybody know who is Parikshit Maharaj
Abhimanyu's son is it Abhimanyu's son?
ah perfect
Abhimanyu's son
right Abhimanyu and Uttara's son perfect you are right so Parikshit Maharaj is a great king and he is a son of Abhimanyu and Uttara Abhimanyu is a son of Arjuna Arjuna Arjuna's son Arjuna and what is that Subhadra Subhadra's son is Abhimanyu Mahabharadham in Mahabharat story we got those information so who is Parikshit Maharaj okay so so basically Shri Laya Parikshit Maharaj was a Rajarsy Rajarsy means king who is also great sage Brahmanical qualities also good qualities also has and king Chhatraya qualities also it's called Rajarishi okay Parikshit means the mean or the meaning of the name Parikshit means examiner why because he has seen the Lord in the Omba Puttar he always searched after that's another name of Parikshit he always searched after that form in whoever that means see you know right in the Mahabharat war if the last ended last episodes of the Mahabharat what happens Ashwath Dhamma wanted to kill entire dynasty of Pandava who is Ashwath Dhamma Ashwath Dhamma is a son of Dronacharya Dronacharya yeah Dronacharya's son is Ashwath Dhamma so Ashwath Dhamma he released Brahma he wanted to see he killed actually he thought he killed Pandavas but he killed Upapandavas and suddenly you know when they when they want to say he that's the reason the Ashwath Dhamma what happens to him when when he wanted to kill entire Pandava dynasty and after the Mahabharat war the only two persons left who Duryodhana and Ashwath Dhamma so Ashwath Dhamma Duryodhana wanted he has requested he has ordered to Ashwath Dhamma to kill all Pandavas and what happens he went to Pandavas you know Hermitage and wherever they stayed in the battlefield and that night all five Upapandavas slept but he thought that they are the Pandavas he killed all Upapandavas and feel that he killed entire Pandavas and he went back to Duryodhana and said that he said that I killed all Pandavas but suddenly
thanks to Prabhuji
yes yes
yeah Shrikanth Prabhuji
yeah Shrikanth Prabhuji हरे कृष्णा Shrikanth Prabhuji yes wonderful thank you so
yeah हरे कृष्णा प्रभुजी
thank you so much Shrikanth Prabhuji for your time and we are discussing about the Shrimad Bhagavatam Prabhuji it's very good for you also please kindly listen and we will you if you have any questions we will discuss at the end okay Prabhuji
yeah okay Prabhuji
thank you so much yeah so that's the reason so what happens when he again suddenly when they see when he see when he saw all five Pandavas he was you know bewildered what happens I killed all five Pandavas suddenly they appeared but that's the reason again so in at that time he got to know that you know there is a you know in Uttara's womb there is a you know in Uttara's womb the dynasty is going and that means the Parikshit Maharaj the in Uttara's womb he got to know that he his dynasty is going to continue he got to know that there is a there is a baby coming out of from Uttara so so even so that he wanted to kill all the dynasty right so that time he released the Brahmastra so the problem is he only knows about the releasing not with the drawing he don't know about that skill so when the Brahmastra but the power of Bhamma Brahmastra is when they recite mantra and if they want to kill somebody that's a day that's a That's a, that's it, that's it, it's going to kill without any, you know, it it crosses all obstacles and directly, you know. Uh all the, uh directly kills anybody, that's a power of Brahmastra. So when he releases, what happens? He he thought in the prayer and he released that mantra and wanted to kill uh uh the, you know, baby form of Uttara's womb. So Krishna, if you look at in this picture. So Krishna wanted to save his devotees, that's the reason, you know, Paritranaya, Sadhana, Vinashaya, Chadhuskuta, Dharma Samstapa, Nartaya, Sambhavami, Yugaevay. Paritranaya, so he wanted to, he wanted to save this baby, right? So he entered into mother's womb, that Uttara's womb and he saved, he saved that personality, if you look at this here, no? She, here, Hashvatam related Brahmastra to kill Parikshitna, Parikshitna saved by Lord Krishna in Uttara's womb, right? So that's the reason he got the name of Parikshit, Parikshit means examiner. And he always searched and he has seen the form, that's a, that's the highest thing. The baby, see, the baby is a very consciousness in mother's womb also, you also, you are also mothers, you experience, right? When baby moves in mother's womb, you feel, we feel, I mean, the the mother is feels. Like my baby is moving here, my baby is, you know, you can experience that, that means consciousness is there. So the wonderful thing is, Parikshit Maharaj has seen the beautiful form of Lord. And that's why, when he come out of the womb, he wanted to the same beautiful form, that's the reason he got the Parikshit. Uh he always searched after that form in whoever he he met, that's back, that's again, that's a thing. Kripacharya was his guru, Parikshit Maharaj's guru is Kripacharya. He rules the whole earth planet at that time, after you know, see, after Mahabharat, after one. After they win in the battlefield, the Pandavas ruled for thirty-two years. And only until this boy becomes younger and you know, until he equipped with all the Chhatraya skill skills, you know, fighting, all these things. One once equipped this boy with all the, they all, all Pandavas left Mahabharat, left to Himalayas for the meditation and then eventually they go back to. Supreme, they go, they go back to uh Supreme Personal Yogurt, guarded by Kunta planets. So all the, all the Pandavas birthday is also different, they are not born by, you know, not motherly, uh they are born. The different, different person, different uh uh with the different, all these Pandavas born by the divine arrangement, that's what I can say. Okay, so nobody could dare to kill helpless under his protection, that's it, he ruled very wonderfully. And he ruled wonderfully, it's all the S B, the S B S B, what is this? Srimad Bhagavatam, there are the multiple verses quoted here. Nobody could dare to kill the helpless under his protection, that means he protected all his uh, you know, inhabitants all in under his rule. It is um is uh ru- is. His rule is so good, that's the reason, that is because of, he is equipped with, Rajarsy, right? Rajarsy is a good qualities of a devotee as well as uh Chhatraya qualities. That's the reason, the principal center leader, leader, he is a principal center leader. He ruled the world as great devotee of the Lord under the instruction of Brahmanas. Under the instruction of Brahmanas, you know, Kripacharya is guru, he always obey his instructions. That way, the kingdom prevails, you know, goodness, auspiciousness, all good things happen in his rule, in his kingdom. As a king, he was responsible for all living being, because that's the reason, right? They are ruling us, they are ruling means, they are responsible for everything, what happens to us. Parikshit Maharaj goes to reconquer the planet, okay? King Parikshit got to know that the four legs of Dharma, see, that's a, that's a thing. That's Kali Yoga started entering in his school, in his kingdom also, he experiencing the Kali Yoga. How King Parikshit got to know that the four legs of Dharma breaking, that you know illicit sex, meat eating, gambling, intoxication, right? So he went out to conquer the world again to establish his supremacy. So King Parikshit started seeing the symptoms of Kali, these are the symptoms of Kali, illicit sex, meat eating, gambling and intoxication. Bull, bull representing Dharma, met cow, actually, okay, bull representing, bull is representing Dharma. Whereas cow representing Bhumi, mother earth, who was lamenting because then these two animals take care of. He, because he was ruled so nicely, what happens, the Kali Yoga is a due course, due course of time. Again, these things happening, illicit sex, meat eating, gambling, intoxication, all four pillars of Dharma, Satyam, Daya, Saucham, Tapas. Uh so these are gone. So he experiencing, he is witnessing, bull representing, okay, this, this, the, the, that's a due, that's a time, you know, column, what, what happens to? Time change, time can change many things, time is a, is a powerful thing, right? Even though king is equipped with good qualities, power of time, it is experiencing, experiencing like that. So Dharma, bull asked Bhumi, earth, why she was crying? So these are the descriptions, why? Because of the, the four problems, the the four things happening. Nobody is properly following regulatory principles, it's called regulatory principles, no meat eating, no game, no intoxication, no gambling and no illicit sex. This is the problem. So if you look at the Dharma inquiry, oh good lady, what is the cause of your grief? Are you suffering from some disease or are you thinking of some relative who is away in a distant place? Are you lamenting for me because I have lost three of my legs? Are you in anxiety because hence for the meat eaters will expedite you, that's a problem. See when Satyam, Daya, Saucham and Tapas, not there, so all these problems will come. So mother earth, if you if you look at the highlighted point, mother earth in the form of a cow replied, oh Dharma. You are also maintained on your four legs by the mercy of Lord Krishna, the reserve of all good qualities. So that happiness spread throughout the universe, Lord Krishna has now concluded his performance of turning pastimes upon the earth. And his in his absence, the age of Kali has spread its influence everywhere. It is because of that, this, that I am very aggrieved. When Krishna left on this planet, when he left, after the, you know, Mahabharat war, after, you know, Varaka. First time when he left means, it's a, it's a, it's a indication of entering the Kali Yoga, the Kali Yoga symptoms. These four problems, these four issues, uh you know, nobody is equipped, nobody is having this. Uh quality is a diminishing, the yoga, yogas uh every day, day by day, day by day, all bad qualities coming up, that's a, that's a thing. That's a replying, mother earth cow is replying that day. Because Krishna left, that's it, then Kali was started entering into the kingdom of Parikshit Maharaj. So Parikshit Maharaj saw, this is one of the incident in his kingdom, he has seen this one. Parikshit Maharaj saw Kali beating cows, so this is the, this is what very encountered and. No, that's a, he he experienced that, oh, now it's another, another yoga cycle is started coming up. Maharaj Parikshit arrived at the bank of the river Saraswati, there he saw a, he saw that a shudra. Wearing the dress of a king was engaged in beating the cow and bull with his club. So this is the pastime, this is the thing he has seen, he has experienced, uh. See. See, when, when we take care of bull and cow, bull represents Dharma and whereas cow represents um earth. Then, in any kingdom, if you look at the previous yogas, they nicely taken care of those two animals. Because those two animals situated in the mode of goodness, again, we we have gone through previous session, more of, three moats of material nature, right? Animals also situated in mode of goodness, what are they, this bull, cow, they only cross, right? They won't eat the animal, right? So that's thing, so, um and another, some birds. Some uh other living entities which categorize a mode of goodness animals. So if you look at this highlighted point, in Satya Yoga, your four legs were established by the practice of austerity, cleanliness, mercy. And truthfulness, Satyam, Daya, Saucham and Tapas, austerity with tapas. Uh so cleanliness is chaucham, mercy, daya and truthfulness, satyam, all is, is there in Satya Yoga. Now however, three of your legs have been broken. Due to rampant religion in the form of pride, lust for women and intoxication, you are standing upon the last leg of truthfulness. Now truthfulness also diminishing day by day, so if it's all Dharma, Dharma Nikunna, Naalu, Padalu, Potunai, that because of the. Uh because of the power of time and because of the due course of this Kali Yoga qualities, it's coming up like that. Okay, so Parikshit Maharaj goes to kill Kali personified, so he is looking at the, see that's the reason, in his, in his kingdom, he has experienced the Kali entering. Okay, so, uh if you, if you see this one, since Kali, since Kali. Surrender King Parikshit said, since you have surrendered yourself unto me with folded hands, you need no longer fear of your life. However, I cannot allow you to remain within my kingdom because the, the power, because this another, see Kali entering means. It's a, see, what is saying, see, here, in this, you have surrendered yourself unto me with folded hands, you need no longer fear of your life. However, I cannot allow you to remain within my kingdom, for you are the friend of, for you. For you are the friend of religion, you do not deserve to reside in a place where god-conscious persons perform sacrifices according to religious principles for the satisfaction of the supreme lord. So it, what is saying again, upon receiving this order, Kali began to tremble with fear. Seeing Maharaja Parikshit, these are all things coming from Bhagavatam Prabhupada and Matharishi, okay, this is description. This is there in the book, in the candles, verses. Upon receiving this order, Kali began to tremble with fear, seeing Maharaj Parikshit stand before him, just like Emiraja. Kali pleaded, oh king, since you are the emperor of the entire world, wherever I may go, I will see you with sword in hand. Ready to punish me for my sinful activities, even though I am your enemy, because I have surrendered unto you. You should not, you should allot me a place of residence where I can live peacefully under your protection. So being this petition, Maharaj Parikshit agreed to allow Kali to live where gambling, see. See where gambling, intoxication, prostitution and animal slaughter were being indulged in, that is where Kali lives. That is where the Kali lives, that is where the Dharma diminishes day by day by day. That is where, that is the, Kali resides in, Kali sitting in these places. Gambling, intoxication, prostitution and animal slather, slathers. However, since such places practically did not exist within Maharaja Parikshit kingdom. Kali felt cheated and so he begged for some something more. In response, Maharaj Parikshit finally agreed that he could live where gold was being kept. For in such places, there is invariably falsity, intoxication, lust, envy and enmity. See Kali entering, right? If you let me see in this, okay. Hmm. To look at this, Kali felt cheated and so he begged for something more, in response Maharaj Parikshit finally agreed that. Because Kali, that's it, it has to happen like that, you know, every yoga, uh every yoga. Because this Kali, Kali is also Krishna's incarnation, he enters that way, because, um. Because the power of time, what happens in every yoga, because it, some people are not abide with the material loss, material nature of loss. They, they disobey the laws, that's why they have, they, they need punishment, right? So Kali, Kali enters and that way, uh it's a, it is, uh. In his Kali, Kali rules, now, now we are, we are not feeling Kali is there, but we Kali is sitting in these places. We control it, quietly, index can prostitution, where we all bad things happens. So that's the thing, so coming to the track to why, why Maharaj Parikshit went to that bank, is the banks of Ganga, Ganga. Why Maharaj Parikshit went to the bank?
Sri Nirmal Shim.
Yeah.
Sorry to interrupt you, I have a doubt here. They said like Kali will be there where gold is, where gold is kept, Kali will be there.
Hmm, that's a, yeah, he could live, yeah, yeah, right, right, we could live, right, right. He could live where gold was being, for in such places, there is invariably falsity, intoxication, lust, envy and enmity. So that's a, see where, then, see different means, Matharishi here, the statement, why it is saying. Uh gold was being, being kept, see, if it is a proper means, if you accumulate and if you use it for, you know. Uh yeah, of course, personal purpose only mostly, but that's the thing. Uh uh you live, I mean, you cannot digest now, but. Hare Krishna.
Uh can I add something?
Yeah, 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 add, add, yes.
Uh actually Mathaji, here gold is like, like enormous belt Mathaji. For example, if you say like daily we are doing Damada Rastakam, right?
Hmm hmm.
So here Damada Rastakam is like, what about Damada Rastakam means? It's like two, like heavenly bodies, like Kuera sons, Manigreva and Alakkuera were cursed. Because of intoxication, because they were the sons of Kuera, who is a very wealthy person in the Demi Gods, you know Kuera, right?
Yeah, 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 hmm.
So it's because of wealth, her dad's wealth or her family's wealth, they got like intoxication and everything, gambling, they did all these four things, Mathaji.
Okay.
Because of wealth, we should, we should utilize it properly, Mathaji, otherwise we will get all these four intoxication.
Okay, okay.
That's a good point, right? She had a nice man, actually she is my wife only, she is giant from other, she is taking care of my kids and attending simultaneously, that's good, thank you Launa. So that's the thing, when you accumulate wealth, which is not more than, that means, you know. See, you required some amount, more than means, it's again binding and all this. Uh if you, for example, if you have more money, what happens? You want to utilize, 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 utilize that way, yeah, all these things karma it will accumulate and. It either it subtly acts, Kali, that's a, that's a symptoms, it's not, Kali act subtly, Mathari, that's we cannot see. It's happening that way, as I said, Kali is sitting in these places, Satyam, there is no Satyam, there is no Daya, there is no Saucham, there is no Tapas, right? That's the thing, that's the thing, we will discuss, we will come to that point, I will get more clarification, Mathari, just hold on a minute. You got some somewhat clarified, but I will let you know.
Yeah, yeah.
Don't worry about any, if I accumulate Kali means Kali is sitting in your, no, that, don't.
Not that, I just wanted to clarify like what exactly it is.
That's good, thank you, right? Then this one, why Maharaj Parikshit went to the banks of Ganga, Gangas, Gangas, so Maharaj Parikshit went to. The banks of Ganga, so where, what happens, so. So this is again, Kali, Kali qualities, even though great Rajarsy. That's, you know, he committed some blunders, you know, because of the influence of the Kali, to look at here, so. Uh Maharaj Parikshit entered Samika Rishi Ashram for water, okay, he entered in the Samika Rishi's ashram for water, okay? So offended by the disrespect of Samika Rishi, he actually is sitting in a, in a yoga asana, he is sitting in a, he is meditating upon, you know, supreme person. He went in his ashram and wanted to ask, entered Samika Rishi Ashram and asking for water. He is completely meditation, offended by the disrespect, he is not giving respect to this king. Of Samika Rishi and Maharaj Parikshit put a dead snake on Rishi's neck and left. Even though he is a good quality, you you may be builder, you may got confused. Even though we are, we have gone through, he is a Rajarshi, they are saying, because that's a, that's a reason, that's a reason. When Kali enters in his kingdom, even eventually do these wrong things because of the influence of the Kali. So he offended by the disrespect of Samika Rishi, Maharaj Parikshit put a dead snake on Rishi's neck and left. Okay, Shringi, Shringi is the son of Samika Rishi, this, this Samika Rishi's son name is called Shringi. Curse is Maharaj Parikshit to be killed by snake bite in seven days. That's a curse he has given, because he had did wrong thing to his father, he cursed, he cursed because of that. So two reasons, among many other reasons, why King Parikshit did such act? To his, here also, we see, it was Lord's plan, one thing, it was Lord's plan for Srimad Bhagavatam to descend, see, see. See Krishna sets an example, sits Krishna needed person, Krishna needed a person, personality. In order to experience, in order to give this knowledge, so two things, two reasons. It was Lord's plan, we never know, see, everything, everything, everything in this material world, under control of Supreme Lord only, right? Under control of Supreme Lord only, Maya Akshena Prakruti, Maya Akshena Prakruti. He is both spiritual and material father and everything, control of him only. As Bhagavat Gita says, as he himself spoke, supreme personality of God, Krishna spoke means. He, because he is authority, because everything is coming from him, right? He can say all those things, I am the Supreme Proprieter, I am the Supreme Controller, I am Supreme M J, he can say everything. So that is Lord's plan, one of the reason is, it was Lord's plan for Srimad Bhagavatam to descend. Second thing, Kali personified entered the mind of King Parikshit Maharaj, see that's a, that's a quality. The bad quality centering in his kingdom, through the gold throne and did the insult, insulting act to start Kali yoga. Repentance of the curse, again, repentance of the, Samika Rishi's calls is his son, Shringi. For such a foolish act of cursing Maharaj Parikshit, Maharaj Parikshit is a great king, he ought to know also, Samika Rishi also. But he was scolding his son, you know, why, why you have, why you have given that kind of, you know, curse? Maharaj Parikshit gets the news of curse, though he had the power to reverse the curse, reverse the curse. He accepts it as a plan of God and leaves his mother, Utara, family and kingdom. See, that's a quality, because he is equipped with the good qualities, he accepted that curse. He accepted the curse and even though he had the power to reverse, because these things are also. No different mantras and you know, can, uh, because they can, they can, they can escape even. These curses also, because they have a power, but, but he accepts, he accepts as a plan of God. And leaves his mother, Utara, family and kingdom. So Maharaj Parikshit adds the kingdom to his son, Maharaj Parikshit's son's name is Janame Jaya, remember this one also. Maharaj Parikshit adds the kingdom to his son Janame Jaya and leaves the, leaves to the bank of the river. Uh, Launa, there, so it's a confusion, Ganga or Yamuna?
Yes. Yeah, tell me.
Is it Ganga or Yamuna, I forgot here, it's probably, I, I, I thought it's Ganga only, right? The banks of the river, Ganges only.
Banks of, yeah, banks of Ganga.
No, no, listen, it's wrong, it's wrong, sorry, it's a Ganges only, maybe mistakes.
Because it is a holy river, right? So everything should be in the holiest place and purity.
That's right, Yamuna only, Yamuna is there, but Yamuna is not coming into play there, but only Ganges only, it's a spell mistake. Please bear with me, he decides to get self-realization before he dies from the, from. He, you see, that's what it is, he decides to get self-realization before he dies from best sage. So that's the reason, so what happens, he want to utilize his, his time, he has only seven days, seven days, seven nights. Only seven days, after cursing means seven days, so what happens, what he is going to do? How and why Srimad Bhagavatam descended on earth now, our actual topic. So what is saying here? So, Srila Vyasadeva completed very literature compilation, this is all literature, we have gone through in previous session, different Puranas, different. Uh, you know, different, different Puranas based on various people situated in that mode. What a goodness, what a passion and what a ignorance, right? He compel everything, what happens to him again, this is what is written. Srimad Bhagavatam says, one, four, thirty, first can and fourth chapter, thirty years, Tataapi Bhata Me Dhai Ho. Asampanna Iva Bhati, Hatma Chaivatmanavibhu Brahmaparvachasya Satamaha. Vedavyasa said, I am feeling incomplete, though I myself am fully equipped with everything required by the Vedas. Incomplete is feeling incomplete, he has written all these Puranas, Upanishads, Vedas. For, all those four Vedas, but he is still feeling incomplete. This is also Lord's arrangement, we can see now, in instruction of Narada Munni to Srila Vyasadeva, so he got to know that. So my disciple, Srila Narada arrived, looking at his disciple situation to guide him. So Vedavyasa's spiritual mastery is Narada Munni. He got to know is because they always see Guru Sisha Parampara, that relation is always, you know. If disciple feels something means guru also knows. Guru also knows, he is feeling incomplete, he is feeling dissatisfied. And he came and Narada arrived, looking at his disciple situation to guide him. So Srimad Bhagavatam, what is Narada Munni saying? You, you have not actually brought, broadcast the sublime and sparkless glories of the personality of God. That philosophy which does not satisfy the transcendental senses of the Lord is considered worthless. So, he has written all the things like Dharma, Artha, Kaum, all the Vedas. He has written, it comes all Dharma, Artha, Kaama, Moksha, is there? All the, in all the Vedas, but it is missing one thing, Bhakti, what he is saying? You have not actually broadcast the sublime and sparkless glories, sublime and sparkless glories. Of the personality of God, that philosophy which does not satisfy transcendental senses of the Lord is considered worthless. So all he has written, does not satisfy the supreme self, it's worthless. That's the reason he is coming, he is feeling incompleteness, he is, you know, compilation. Now, what is saying, Narada Munni tells Vedavyasa to write Srimad Bhagavatam, okay? So this one we have gone through in first session, Vedavyasa, Ganesha, there is, you know, Srimad Bhagavatam Puranam. See, Ganesha helps Vedavyasa to complete even the final Vedic literature instructed by Vedavyasa. Everything is compiled in written form, farm leaves. Okay, so now, now we got to know why Vedavyasa written this literature. Because of the incompleteness, because of dissatisfaction, so he is now start writing. Um, all the things about, apart from Dharma, Artha, Kaama, Moksha is including Bhakti also. But, but that is there, all other Vedas describing four topics, Dharma, Artha, Kaama, Moksha. Now here, this Srimad Bhagavatam dedicatedly about the devotional service, Bhakti yoga. Bhakti is giving everything, every pastime if you look at, Bhakti is there. Whereas kings, pastimes, different, different kings, King Vena, King Parikshit Maharaj. Now if you look at here, King Prutu Maharaj, King Ambharish Maharaj, and. Uh, various other. Kunti Maharani. Kunti Maharani is Pandavas, uh, various other pastimes, like you know, if you look at. Gajendra Moksha is there and what is that, um, uh, this one. Uh, Pralad, Pralad, Narasimha's pastimes, uh, and Dhruva Maharaj's pastimes. Kuntide prayers, Dhau, Dhauwadi Marani prayers, Gopi, Gopi's prayers. That's the reason, it's put it in all eighteen thousand verses, always talks about Bhakti. That's the ultimate thing, right? Krishna said. Teevreena Bhaktiyogena, Krishna says in the Bhagavad Gita, in one of the verse, Teevreena Bhaktiyogena. Bhakti yoga, three brain, how? If you remember the Bhagavatam pastimes, your devotional life is going to be purified. You are going to experience the spiritual love between you and the Supreme Personality of God. That's the reason, Krishna only says Bhakti yoga is the ultimate path, that's it, Bhakti yoga includes everything actually. It includes Jhana, Karma, Dhyana also, when we chant Hare Krishna Mahamantra is there. So now, who is this personality now? Who is Srila Sukhadeva Goswami, now, another character coming into play, now we have seen Vedavyasa's situation. Uh, Parikshit Maharaj's situation.
And one more thing, excuse me, and one more thing, like Narada Munni says like to Vedavyasa. That you didn't glorify Krishna repeatedly, Supreme Personality of God, repeatedly. Like somebody he repeated, he did in like Vishnu Purana, Garuda Purana, someone, but not repeatedly. So he want to do it repeatedly again and again, so he compelled Bhagavatam.
Yeah, and it's a sparkless Purana, Srimad Bhagavatam Amalam Puranam. Srimad Bhagavatam Amalam Puranam, it says, that means this Bhagavatam is about. Everything about Krishna, everything about pastimes, Dashavataram we have seen in this pastime, Rama, about Rama's glories. Also seen, Parishurama, all the, you know, uh. Dashavatara is also coming into, in these books and we can experience the discussions when it happened, what exactly. We have all the technical details in this Purana, this is Amala Puran, sparkless Amala Puran. It's a very pure, pure, uh, literature. And it's, it's, we, and it's coming from a pure devotee again, that's the Deva. Uh, you know, that's why Narada Munni, it's a Guru Parampara system again, we all the three, these sessions. From session one till today, we discussed about the, the knowledge we have to receive from the Guru Parampara system. Guru and disciples to be there, that way knowledge flows without any interpretations. Knowledge as Krishna presented, just like we receive, that, that's a beauty of Guru Parampara system. This knowledge has to receive from a guru and we have to serve him and get the knowledge, that's the thing. Now coming to this character, now we gone through Vedavyasa situation, Parikshit Maharaj situation. And Narada Munni came into play to give the instruction, you write Srimad Bhagavatam. And now we talk about this personality, Srila Sukhadeva Goswami, who is he? Srila Sukhadeva Goswami heard Srimad Bhagavatam in his mother's home, how? Do you know anybody, any idea who is Sukhadeva Goswami, before I start looking into the content? Yeah, Sukhadeva Goswami is the son of Vedavyasa, now we can discuss now. So Srila Sukhadeva Goswami, just, you know, Vedic literature, it's, it's like a parrot. Srila Sukhadeva Goswami was a parrot in the spiritual world, who descended to this planet. Um, to reside Srimad Bhagavatam, when a ripe and fruit like Srimad Bhagavatam comes from the sweet mouth of parrot, Sukha. It becomes more, that's, that's called, it's, it's a, his name Sukhadeva Goswami Sukha. It's called parrot mouth, so it's called, it's called a sweet mouth of parrot, Sukha, it becomes more nictarian. See, it's a third verse of Srimad Bhagavatam, Nigama Kalpa Galor Dalitam. Sukha Muka Amrutta Dravasam Yutham, that means this literature coming from a pure devotee called Sukhadeva Goswami. And it's a ripe and fruit, uh, which bitten by parrot, that, that, that fruit is so sweet, right? When parrot eat that, for example, Jamapandu or whatever, if, if the, the fruit gives more tasty. This is sparkless Purana, this Bhagavatam is like that. Srila Vyasadeva recited Srimad Bhagavatam to his wife while she was pregnant, that is the discussion. So Srila Vyasadeva recited this Srimad Bhagavatam to his wife while she was pregnant. Sukhadeva Goswami heard all the pastimes from his father and became self-satisfied in the womb. Self-satisfied in the womb, that, that's called Sukhadeva Goswami. It's called Goswami, he is controller of his senses, that's why he called his, his name also got Goswami, in control of his senses. Again, here, hearing the dualities of material world caused by three modes of material nature. Sukhadeva Goswami refused to come out, come out for sixteen years. See, the problem with material world, you know, right? Dualities, like today, we are experiencing too, too cold because of the weather, you are all experiencing, right? Because of the duality, sometimes happiness, sometimes distress, sometimes heat, sometimes cold. Because of the material nature is like that, that is called duality. So hearing the duality say of material world caused by three modes again, again, three modes, more of goodness, passion and ignorance. We, a person in this material world cannot always happy, sometimes he will happy, sometimes morose. This, that's the quality of this material nature, okay? So Sukhadeva Goswami refused to come out of for sixteen years, he situated in his mother's home. So you may, you may think that, you may think that, how it possible? Because normally, in, in human, in women's home, normally seven to eight months, nine months, but this personality. He situated, he lives in his mother's home sixteen years. But because, because some, some, some spiritual concept inconsiderable, because it's divine arrangement. Divine arrangement which we cannot understand, because, because our mind is limited. Our mind is limited and it cannot understand the, uh, topics beyond certain point. For example, in this situation, Sukhadeva Goswami lived in his mother's home sixteen years. You may feel that if you look at material perspective, it is something story, but it's not correct. Because, because it's a divine arrangement, it can be existed, because that's arrangement, arrangement of Lord. So he situated sixteen years of mother's home and what happens again? Next thing, Srila Vyasadeva had, had to take help from Lord Krishna to ask Sukhadeva Goswami to come out. Lord Krishna promised that modes of material nature will not affect Sukhadeva Goswami, then only come out of. As soon as if you look at this, he requested, because Vyasadeva is composing all the Vedic literature, he, he, he is written. Srimad Bhagavatam and, and he requested, he prayed to Supreme Personality of God and you know. Um, he take help, help from Lord Krishna and ask Sukhadeva Goswami to come out, because sixteen years it's going on. His youth also there in his mother's home, right? So Lord Krishna is given promise that modes of material nature will not affect Sukhadeva Goswami. The three modes will not affect, when he come out of the mother's home, three modes of won't affect. So now we can see here, so the problem here is, see, we are shy, for example, few things. Because he is elevated personality, he is elevated personality, Sukhadeva Goswami is an elevated personality. And that's why he situated in his mother's home sixteen years. Sukhadeva Goswami left home, as soon as, as soon as he come out of mother's home, he left home, because he already is grown up, right? Sixteen years by, Sukhadeva Goswami left home and as he walked through a stream of river. Where the young girls were taking bath, they did not feel shame looking at him, because his, his body is glorious. Full glory, uh, full beautiful, I mean, they are seeing about the personality, the, so, um. Sukhadeva Goswami's personality and it's, his body is so glorying, they are not worried about anything, they are, you know, they did not feel shame. They did not feel shame because of his, his, his glory, is a, is a body is glory is glorifying. Uh, you know, that's there, that, and common people could, could not understand the state of consciousness of Sukhadeva Goswami. That's a problem, because we are under the modes of material nature means, uh, we may come to, you know, the, see. As soon as, as soon as he come out of mother's home means, there is no clothes, there is no nothing, just, just like that, he is walking. Uh, on the, you know, uh, the, you can assume the scene. But, but because he is not under the control of material modes, that means he is beyond, he is transcendental to three modes. He is situated in pure goodness, Sudhasatva, right? Common people could not understand the state of consciousness of Sukhadeva Goswami. So Bhagavad Gita, what is saying, what is night, that is the problem with us, Prabhupada and Matha Rish, Krishna says here. What is night for all beings is the time of awakening for the self-control and the time of awakening for all beings is night. For the introspective stage, why we put this verse here? Because Sukhadeva Goswami, there is no difference, because he is not under the control of modes of material nature. He is beyond the three modes of material nature, as we situated in this, with this, in this modes. We experience like, you know, day is there, night is there, afternoon is there, right? And so that's the thing, so he's a, you see, because, because it's Krishna. Uh, you know, because Krishna only taken care of him, because he, he promised to Vyasadeva, right? Uh, he promised to Sukhadeva Goswami, and you don't affect, you won't affect any material modes, you come out. Then he come out and you know, what happens, when he come out of, what is going to happen, now my next slide we will see. So what were the, okay, what were the questions, is now, is always glorifying, see, he heard, he heard Srimad Bhagavatam. From his mother's home, as Vyasadeva described all these pastimes of the Supreme Lord. He, he has memory, he is entire Srimad Bhagavatam in his body, in his consciousness. He is always thinking about the wonderful forms of Lord, thinking about him pastimes, he is always in a different. We can say in a trance, different, always situated in the devotional mood and always. Uh, that kind of consciousness he equipped with, because he heard Srimad Bhagavatam in his mother's home and he got that consciousness, right? So if you see, see, Parikshit Maharaj asked Brahmanas his questions. So now Parikshit Maharaj, very easy now, Parikshit Maharaj, um. The supreme, we can read these translations only, the supreme personality of God, the controller of both transcendental and mundane worlds. Has graciously overtaken me in the form of Brahmanas curse. Due to my being too much attached to family life, that Lord in order to save me, has appeared before me in such a way that. Only out of fear, I will detach myself from the world. So that is another, and another way of understanding, as Bhagavatam says, Parikshit Maharaj's situation, this verse is says, so. Uh, oh trustworthy Brahmanas, I now ask you about my immediate duty. He is asking about, he is a Parikshit Maharaj's immediate duty, what is my immediate duty? So I have only seven days, seven, seven days and seven nights left, what is my duty, immediate duty, what I need to? A person is going to die in seven days and seven nights, what is going to be his primary duty? That's what he, he is asking about this Brahmanas, or trustworthy Brahmanas, I now ask you about my immediate duty. Please, after proper deliberation, tell me of the allied duty of everyone in all circumstances. And specifically of those who are just about to die, again, his situation only, Srimad Bhagavatam. So he is asking right questions, what, what is going to be, happen to my life after, you know, nine days, after seven days. So what is saying, from different parts of the. So he what is saying, from different parts of the universe, there arrived great sages. From different parts of the universe, there are a, there arrived great sages in this assembly. What they are saying, great sages like Attri, so these are all the names, see, how historical this book, Simant Bhagavatam, see. Every name, great sages names mentioned, great sages like Attri, Chavana, Shardavan. Aristanemi, Brugu, Vasista, Parashara, Vishvamitra, Angira, Parishurama. Utatyah, Indrapramada, uh all these great sages assemble there and the and the great personality Narada. Simant Bhagavatam one nineteen eleven, there were also many other saintly demigods, kings and special royal orders called. Arunadhyas, a special rank of Rajarshis from different dynasties of sages. When they all assembled together to meet the Emperor Parikshit, he received them properly and bowed his head to the ground. That's the pay obeisances, you know, please I accept my umbula obeisances, we write, right, it's a vishna quality. So he 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 assemble uh all the demigods, all these great uh. I know Rogers is all these great Brahmanas and these uh sages. He pay he pay respect to them, he pay obeisances to them, right, now. See, Parikshit Maharaj met Shri Deva, Srilagus, Sukhadeva Goswami near Gangda, now, so all assemble now, time come. Because all the demigods appeared means, uh it's time come to the Parikshit Maharaj. To meet this wonderful personality, who is this wonderful personality, Srilasukhadeva Goswami. Should have seen Srilasukhadeva Goswami, see, he is look at, he is look like naked personality. But he is not, don't, you know, our mind is, uh you know, speculative, don't speculate, please Prabhuj Smahatari. Because he is a, he is a divine personality, Sukhadeva Goswami is a divine personality, Krishna personally blessed him. Krishna personally blessed him and he, there won't be touching of material modes, modes of material nature, no. That's why he is a great devotee, that's why when we want to hear Simant Bhagavatam. It has to be here from a pure devotee, Bhagavata, a person has to be a Bhagavata. That means he has to seriously sincerely practice this Dharma, Bhagavata Dharma. That's why it's called Bhagavat, it's called Paramahamsas, Paramahamsa Bhagavatas, they don't have any. They don't have any relationship with this material, if you look at some wonderful personality, you also feel that way. Oh, this personality is a divine personality, he is always thinking about his devotion service, he always thinking about Lord. He is doing wonderful services, we see some personalities, right? So they situated, they situated in pure goodness, they always remember Krishna, never forgets. So if you look at, again, the time has come, Sri Parikshit Maharaj met Srilasukhadeva Goswami near Gangda. Right, so now here, the Bhagavatam discussion comes, what happened now? I have mentioned right this verse. Tatvadarshi, the Sukhadeva Goswami is a tatvadarshi, he has seen all the truth. He has read everything, he he gone through all the pastimes of Simant Bhagavatam and everything is there in his mind and now he is going to. Uh give this knowledge to Parikshit Maharaj, now see, now Parikshit Maharaj's met means he surrendered to. Sukhadeva Goswami and all the seven days, seven nights, complete focused, he is hearing about the pastimes of the Simant Bhagavatam. That's it, so this, see here, this is the beauty. Sri Parikshit Maharaj asked two questions which formed the basis for Bhagavatam to be spoken. So now if you look at this, Bhagavatam to be spoken, two questions. You are the spiritual master of great saints and devotees. I am therefore begging you to show the way of perfection for all persons and especially for one who is about to die. The same question he is asking to Sukhadeva Goswami, Parikshit Maharaj is asking to question to Sukhadeva Goswami. Please let me know what a man should hear, chant, remember and worship. And also what he should not do, please explain all this to me. Right, so these questions he is asking. Inquiring, that's the reason, right, inquiring, submissive hearing, submissive hearing and inquiry, we have to inquire. You have to clarify all the doubts and we have to hear from the elevated personality, just like Sukhadeva Goswami. Right, Simant Bhagavatam, second chapter, first chapter twenty seven, what are you saying? The fortunate king Parikshit inquiring for the said. Oh Brahmana, please describe in full detail how and where the mind has to be applied. And how the conception can be fixed so that the dirty, the dirty things in a person's mind can be removed. That's a, that's the thing. See asking, no, oh Brahmana, please describe in full detail, how, he is asking again this question. How and where the mind has to apply? And how the conception can be fixed, what I need to meditate upon, conception means, is what conception should I meditate? Is a form, right, so there are different relations, but as we discussed last session, right? Three kinds of relations, as they have given example of some planet, sunshine, sun planet and sun god. Different relations, that's the conception, so if you look at here, he is asking about, he is asking question, how the conception can be fixed? What are the conception, what needs to be meditated upon, he is asking that question. So that the dirty things in person's mind can be removed, it means he is going to purify his consciousness. And completely focus on Supreme Lord, now. Now, uh we will see now, these are the, these are the description about the. Uh how Bhagavatam spoken, who is Parikshit Maharaj, we got to know, who is Sukhadeva Goswami, we got to know. What is his disposition of Vyasadeva, why he has compared this very literature of. After compilation of the Vedic literature, why he is he is come up with this Simant Bhagavatam, right? So we have gone through it, so now let me share few more important things about the Simant Bhagavatam. So various Vaishnava Acharyas glorified uh Simant Bhagavatam because see. Just like Sukhadeva Goswami, it's the knowledge coming from Guru Parampara system, right? Ultimately, whoever whoever follow the right path, whoever follow the proper teachings which come from Guru Parampara system. They experienced, they experienced the 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 value, they experienced the value, they experienced the importance. Uh they experienced the happiness by hearing chanting about glory, glorifying Simant Bhagavatam. Because it's not deviating from the original teachings of Krishna, right? Then they hear originally, that means we feel, we become happy. Because we we have same kind of taste as Parikshit Maharaj's hearing, when both of them, both of them conversed, you know. He is describing, Sukhadeva Goswami is describing about all the glories because he heard from his father. About the Supreme Personality of God and all the Bhagavatam is talks about Bhakti. And various kings' pastimes, various kings' pastimes, uh we will discuss in in this uh. Contents, we will discuss about contents in Simant Bhagavatam at the end of session, quickly go through each book, what exactly in each book. Um it contains, let me quickly uh go through some of the Vaishnava Acharyas realizations. Okay, so let me show you. Um. Right, hmm. You are able to see, right? Can you, can anybody confirm?
Yes, yes, you know.
Thank you, thank you, Mataji, so now, so now now different different perspective, we have to understand this value of the scripture. Different different perspective, so we have to see, why can't he just see? The problem, see, the problem is material world is we are under the control of three modes of material nature, right? Three modes of material nature and Krishna only says dukkhalayam ashashvatham, because this material world is. Dukkhalayashashvatham, nobody is going to be happy every time. Sometimes happy, sometimes morose, sometimes bad, sometimes uh all these dualities are there. So now, why concern, I want to get rid of, I want to get rid of this, all the problems of this material, I want to go back to. You know peaceful life, happy life, I don't need any problems, jannamrutijaravyadi, I don't want any those three other problems. Trishula of Durga Devi, you know, Adyatmika, Adidavika, Adi, Adyatmika, Adidavika. I don't need all those problems, why? So we have that kind of feeling sometimes, you know, I don't need all those things, I need simple life, peaceful life. I need, I I wanted to be always happy, it's a nature, our innate nature. So that's why, why can't he just take us? So that's the problem, you know, God, what is saying, doesn't doesn't interfere with our free will. We have to use our free will properly and he doesn't want to force us to love, he he we. It's a voluntary needed, right, he doesn't want, no, you have to love me, there is no force, it's love is to be voluntary. And he actually Krishna is waiting for us, then this soul is coming back to me because he left my my place. And he went to the material suffering, he went back to material world and suffering, he always waits, waiting for us, Supreme Personality of God. And compassionately, compassionately creates situation, he creates a situation. So now you are all wonderful fortunate people, you are understanding this knowledge, this is this situation is created by Krishna only, not me and anybody. That this power of time, he has created this situation, now you are hearing this glories, compassionately creates. Sense is representatives, that means discipline succession, the knowledge comes from his discipline succession, the knowledge, he sends the representatives. Sends the scriptures, again the sense, sends the scriptures, these scriptures, Bhagavad Gita Bhagavatam. So various various Vaishnava Acharyas, what is saying, see. Vedashasapuraana kahia vedavyasa tata chittaera nahipayena prakashya, this this knowledge is. Vedash, yaakhaneshri bhagavata jihvasa spuriela tata tata kshane chitta vritti prasanna hala. If you focus on these pastimes of Simant Bhagavatam, this great Vaishnava Acharya, what is saying? Tata kshane, every minute, chitta vritti, prasanna hala, we become blessed, we become happy. If you focus completely on the glories of the pastimes of the uh pastimes mentioned in Simant Bhagavatam. And the book, what is saying, crown jewel of all scriptures, essence of all Vedic scriptures, as it's a. It's a, it's everything's commentary on the Vedanta Sutras, again Vedanta Sutras, he has written Vyasadeva. As part of his in his compilation, everything, everything is written in this Simant Bhagavatam. Right, so again, one inauspicious can enter house, which has no inauspicious. No inauspicious can enter house, which has Simant Bhagavatam. One of the great Vaishnava Acharya, his name is Vrundavandashtaku, he is saying. Bhagavata pustakata kaya ra gare, ko na amangala nahiyaya tata gare. What is it, ko na amangala? No ass, no inauspiciousness, a person who who possesses this Simant Bhagavatam, there is no amangala. Everything purity, everything mangala, mangala pradhamayana twenty pusaka, mangala pradhamayana, mangala pradhamayana twenty scripture. Sarva shastraadi piusha sarva vedai ka shappala, sarva siddhanta ratna idya sarva lokaika drupada. Sarva bhagavata prana, simat bhagavat, kali, brahmano, ditya, Sri Krishna parivatana, another verse. Glorifying of this Simant Bhagavatam, right, so okay. See, again, festival of mind, have you ever heard this none, this analogy, festival of mind? Festival of mind, our mind is always be become festival. Hare Krishna Mataji, can you, can you please unmute?
Sorry.
Yeah, it's okay, it's okay, that's fine, yeah, that's fine. Festival of mind, our mind be, mind, it gives the festival to our mind, when we, when you, when you reside this. When you start reading Simant Bhagavatam, right? Hmm. Various, various, aaradya bhagavan, rajyesa tanayastadhama vrundavanam, aaradya object of worship, transcendental abode, upasana worship. Sparkless authority, all the things, Lord Srijitana Mahaprabhu conclusion, okay. Sri Krishna, Vasana Maharaja, Vrundavana, that which performed Prajagop is Simant Bhagavatam. Pramanam, sparkless authority, prema, pure love of God, again, Simant Bhagavatam gives pure love of Godhead. Pure love of Godhead, that means ananya bhakti, it gives ananya bhakti. Always, always glorifying Lord, always in the spiritual bliss when we practice. And the and this is another point, either one of the above we contacted, it leads progression to devotion service. As one of the great Vaishnava Acharya, Rupa Goswami has given this five, five potent of bhakti, what is saying? Sadhusanga, uh namakirtana, bhagavatasravana, matthura vas, shri more. Sri more teera, shraddhayaa, sevanaa, deity worship. Five potent forms, you know, even if we come in contact with one of them, it progressing into your devotion service. If you take Simant Bhagavatam, you are you, Krishna is with you, Krishna coming to your home, that's what another verse says. Let me see here. Uh if you look at, by worshiping Bhagavatam, Krishna is worshiping. Bhagavata poojile, krishnera poojaaya, bhagavata patana shravana, bhaktimaya, bhaktimaya. By worshiping Bhagavatam means Krishna is worship, Krishna is in his, in your home. It is a no inauspiciousness, everything auspicious, if you possess this uh Simant Bhagavatam sets. And various topics, it's a lot of things, you know, and compared, if this is Simant Bhagavatam compared Krishna's body like this, you know. There are twelve cantas as we described, right? First to two cantas, just like Lotus feet, third for cantos ties. Fifth cantor, novel part of the Lord, sixth cantor, chest part of the Lord, this is analogy, as given the Vaishnava Acharyas. Seven and eight arms, seven and eight arms, ninth one throat. Tenth one is Lotus face, Supreme Personality of God is Lotus face, eleventh one, forehead is forehead. And twelfth can't can't do entire is head, it's a description of the Bhagavatam, is Krishna's body. How beautiful Krishna's body, Krishna is with you, Krishna is coming to your home. That's the reason, if you possess, if you have Simant Bhagavatam, see how beautiful, there are twelve cantos. Each cantor describe each part of the limbs of the Supreme Personality of God, it's a sloka mentioned here, no, padav, yadiv, pratthanav, vitritiya. And Nabi, bhujjanthanam, even this all the, this literature, authenticated literature. I see Krishna's body, Simant Bhagavatam, Krishna's body, see, apara sansara samudra setum, bajamahe bhagavatasvarupam. Is a swarupa of Bhagavatam, Supreme Personality of God is this swarupa, is this swarupa in the form of literary incarnation, in the form of. Scripture, Bhagavatam scripture, Padmapuranam says this one. Right, so there are various different topics, ten topics, Simant Bhagavatam talks about. The creation of the universe, sub-creation, various plant, you see, within five to ten minutes, we will conclude, Prabhuj Sanmataji. Thank you so much for your time and giving me and really appreciate, I have, I pay respects all of you, thank you so much. So what is saying, Simant Bhagavatam talks about ten topics, what are they? The creation of the universe, how this universe is created, the sub-creation, see. See Brahma is the secondary creator, Naati is the first creator, because Brahma comes from Naavel, you know, Abdomen, right? Brahma comes from Krishna's body, but first created Krishna only. Brahma we call as secondary creator, is not a first creator, that's why it's called sub-creation. And various planetary systems, atalavitala sutala, talatala patala, bhur bhuar loga, swarga loga, satya loga, tapo loga. And jana loga, tapo loga, jana loga, satya loga, various planetary systems defined. Protection by the Lord, the topic, another topic is how to protect his lords, all the various pastimes. He gives protection to his devotees, then they, when he then surrender to him, sarva dharman parityajja, maamekam sharanam bracha. All the devotees, when we see in Simant Bhagavatam, they surrendered, ultimately they surrendered to Krishna. Then Krishna is going to take care of them, protection by the Lord, the creative impetus, the changes. The change of manos, different manos, different manos, they have, they have seen, right? Um so detailed topics, see, I am, this Simant Bhagavatam is such a vast subject matter. We cannot discuss in one hour and I am not qualified, I am just giving whatever I got the knowledge from Guru Sishaparampara and just having sharing this knowledge. We cannot, there are a lot of things, lot, different different topics described in this Bhagavatam. The signs of God, returning home, how to really go back to God and liberation, mukti. Mukti, okay, and and the sammambonam, ashraya, it's called ashraya, ultimately complete surrender to him. Ashraya, right, when we take complete ashraya to Supreme Personality of God, what happens, he is going to take care of it, us. And again, this was also we have gone through, right, different different topics. Right, you know, sargavi, ten topics, sargavi, sargasthana, pochana, uti, manvantar, eshaanukata, ashraya, mukti, niroda, various things. First, we will, we look at it, two, three things here, three slides, beginning. Beginning, first can, first verse of Srimad Bhagavatam is saying, om namo bhagavate vasudevaya. Om namo bhagavate vasudevaya, Krishna is here, oh, description, janma dhyasya, what are the things here mentioned? Defining the absolute truth, all this Srimad Bhagavatam talks about absolute truth. And these seven things, primal cause, cognizant, independent, enlightened, bewilderer, factual basis, eternal abode. And see again, satyam paramdhima, if you look at the last line, satyam paramdhimani, paramdhimahi. It's a very analytical study, actually Srimad Bhagavatam is a kind of R and D research and. It's a kind of, yeah, R and D, personal, personal, spiritual R and D, you can say that. So satyam paramdhimahi, it ends with first verse, satyam paramdhimahi. And at the end of that Bhagavatam, after twelve cantos, eighteen thousand verse, eighteen thousand verse also end with satyam paramdhimahi. Right, Krishna is personally speaking through Parampara, Brahmanarada, Vyashdev, Sukadeva, Parikshit, that's what it is saying here. Okay, so glorifying Bhagavatam, second verse is what is saying, rejects cheating religion. It talks about Bhagavatam, performs highest truth, understandable by non-invest, distinguishes reality from illusion. Approves the miseries, sufficient for God realization, establishes Lord in heart. This is, these two books are enough, Raviji Sanmataji, to sufficient for God realization. Bhagavat Gita Bhagavatam, right? And the knowledge has to come from Parampara system, this is slide creates, one of my. Siksha Guru, his grace, Gaurangadharshan Babaji, he lives in Golden, I got the slides from his lecture. So this is the thing, the knowledge has to come from Parampara and beauty, see. Last twelve cantos, thirteenth one, thirteenth chapter, nineteenth verse also ending with satyam paramdhimahi. What is the satyam paramdhimahi, is absolute personality of God, Supreme Personality have guarded, to know. To Supreme Personality have guarded, we have to render devotion service, that's what it is saying. Right, one last pick, sharing here. See, see, all the contents of Srimad Bhagavatam brief things, we quickly go through, there are twelve books we said, right, twelve cantos. First cantor talks about creation, various pastimes. Lord Krishna's Emperor birthday, Emperor Parikshit, Vidraasakits home, Pandavasi day timely. Appearance of Sukadeva Swami, first candor it says, second candor what is says, the cosmic manifestation, right? Purusha Sukta, confirm schedule incarnations, question breaking, Parikshit, answers by setting large version, large version. Bhagavatam is the answer to all questions. And it's a Lotus Sweet of Supreme Personality have guarded, we have begun to his body, right? So this is the creation, you see, if you look at this beauty of this picture, it talks about all planetary systems, cosmic manifestation. It's called cosmic manifestation, all various planetary systems. And if you see, Brahma comes in is a novel, no, it talks about Bhagavatam talks about very detail, detail information. And cantor three status cue, what they are saying, widras approach is various first and, you know, manifestation of Brahma from Garbodaksha Vishnu. There are different, different spiritual topics talk in this cantos. No, Leela Avatara, Gunavatara, Shakti Avashay, Avashayavatara, Shakti Aveshavatara. Different, different, like, you know, different, differently laws, different reincarnations, avatars. Is described in this, you know, killing of the demon Irenya Aksha. Maitreya discussion between Maitreya and Vidura, Manu and Karthama Muni, Deva Huti and Karthama Muni. These are characters, these are the various personalities to talk about. Kapila's instructions, Lord Kapila's instructions on the movement of the living entity, see. In previous session, in a previous sessions we got to know, right? Bhagavatam describes very long back ago about the how human birth takes place in mother's womb. So that's there here, no, Lord Kapila's instructions on the movements of the living entities. Entitlement or different entitlements of fruit activities, activities of Kapila. It talks about all the, all the, what is that, Machavatara, Kurmaavatara, Varahavatara. All the glories described in this Bhagavatam, because it's entirely about the Bhakti. Bhakti, Bhakta and Bhagavan, these three things talks about Bhagavatam, Bhakti, Bhagavatam, Bhakti, Bhagavan and Bhakta. Three things, the creation of the fourth order, various things. I know, it's a, it's a lifetime book, actually, one has to read, one has to understand, one has to, you know. Understand, assimilate this knowledge and practice it. Now eventually Krishna is going to take care of us, we go back home, get to, back to God it, see Prutumara is a great king. Druva Maharaj is a great king. See, the talks between Narada Muni and King Prachina Barhi, have you ever heard this, this name, Prachina Barhi? They have wonderful stories they describe, and it's all historical events, in the, in the, in the time, power of time, in the due course of time. All the descriptions mentioned, Prachina Barhi, now the discussion between Narada, who is Prachina Barhi? You have to understand, King Puranjana, Puranjana becomes a woman in the next life, who is King Puranjana? It's a different past tense, who is Swambu Amanu? Daksha. And this various things, we each cantor talks about many different personalities, and Rishabhadeva. And you know, we have gone through one of the verse. You know, who is going to be become spiritual master, Guru Nasasya, Swagana Nasasya, easy, Rishadava teachings. Meru Devi, the wife of, the wife of King Nabi, King Nabi, have you heard this name, King Nabi, no? This is a reason, even I also start reading this wonderful literature. The prayers offered to the Lord by the residents of Jambodipa. A description of the island of Jambodipa, Shishumar planetary system, what are the Shishumar planetary systems? Who is Jada Bharata, who is the king, conversation between Maharaja Rahugana and Jada Bharata. King Rahugana, Jada Bharata, these are the various pastimes. Ultimately, all these pastimes ends with devotion, that is the beauty of Bhagavatam. We can see their material life for these great kings. And how they come to a conclusion that surrendered to Krishna and, you know, we mostly talk about this Bhagavatam. Prescribed duties for mankind, what are the prescribed duties for mankind? So Ajamilah, who is Ajamilah, Ajamilah delivered by Vishnu Dutas, who is, who are the Vishnu Dudas? Who is Yamaraja, Narada Muni cursed by Prajapatid Daksha, Vruthasura glorious death. King Indra's pastime, Chitra Kethu's pastime, Diti vows to killing Indra. Performing the Pumsovan ritualistic ceremony, what is that called, why we need to do that ceremony? Why, why they did in, in that time? It's a, it's all historical events, Raviji Sanmataji, the seventh cantor, the signs of God. Signs of God is more, see if you look at this picture, see, Bralal Maharaj and, and his daddy, his father. Irenya Kashku. Irenya Kashku and Pralal pastimes in the seventh, seventh candor. And for perfect society, Bhagavatam given all the principles, all the instructions for humankind. But what is the exact perfect society, what are the four social classes, four spiritual classes? The behavior of a perfect person, ideal family life, civilized with human beings. Now, now if you look at this material world, in this material, you know. Mostly uncivilized, because all the Dharma, they are not following Dharma, what is the Dharma? Dharma, four legs, four legs of Dharma is not there, uncivilization going on. With the trial of the cosmic creations, different, different things discussed here, you know, manos, elephant, Ganyandra Moksha pastimes. Lord Shiva save the universe by drinking poison, that you know, Samudramantan, churning of the milk ocean. King Indra annihilates the demons, Mohini Murthi farm, Bali Maharaja. You see, Bali Maharaja and Vaamandevan Bali Maharaja, pastime, Lord Vaamandevan Bali Maharaja stories. Matsya, the Lord Fish Incarnation, talking about the Shavat again, again, Zitamo, Lord Ramchandra. Dynasty, Sukanya, Chavanna Muni, Durvasa Muni, Dynasty of, the Dynasty of Amsuman. Lord Ramchandra rules the world, Dynasty of Ghusha, Dynasty of Maharaja Nimi, Maharaja Nimi, who is Maharaja Nimi? King Puravara enchanted by Urvasi. See, it's a book of life, that's why it's a book of life, every day we have to read one, one page, two page, three page, you know. To purify ourselves, that's, that's a practice, that's a practice, that's right. In order to progress Bhakti, two things required, attentive hearing, attentive chanting. These books helps us to elevate our consciousness, to, to back home, back to God it, we have proved with all the good qualities. And the various Dynasty of Bharata, Dynasty of Puru, discussions, various discussions, we coming to tenth, tenth cantor, Sammambonam. It's lot of pastimes, Vrundavana pastimes, you know, Lord Krishna's birth, you know. All the pastime, we killed number of demons, Dhenukasura, Urtasura. Various pastimes, and in a, Vrundavana pastimes. Everything mentioned, it's a big chapter, it's ten chapter, I am unable to read this, many, many, many glories of the various pastimes. The history of Kalia, Kalia Damana Vihara, Agasura, Dhradavarta, Pootana, Kamsa. Various pastimes mentioned in the tenth candor. To come to eleventh candor, generalist, what is the generalist tree? You see, again, it's coming to end of the Bhagavatam, candor eleven, what is then, what they are saying, different is Uddavagita, it's coming here. The curse, Yedu, curse upon the Yedu dynasty, Maharaja Nimi meets a nine yoga, Navayogendra, it's called nine yoga endras, Navayogendras. Maharaja Nimi meets them, Dhru Mila explained the incarnations of Godhead, Godhead to King Nimi. Lord Krishna instructs Uddava, it's called Uddavagita, this chapter, Lord Krishna instructs Uddava. The story of Pingala, the prostitute story, but ultimately eventually she become a devotee of Supreme Personality have guarded. There are different information, generalist, nature of primitive activity, symptoms of condition and liverings, living entities. Amsoavatara, various pastimes mentioned here. Bhakti yoga and again here description about the Jana Yoga Bhakti Yoga, that is appearance of Yedu dynasty. You know, Dwarka, Dwarka pastimes, Yedu dynasty, all the things described here. In this candor, it's a call generalist, eleventh candor, last candor, Prabhuji Sanmatam, this is a twelve candor, that age of deterioration. This is the age of deterioration, what is the Kalivah, the degraded dynasty of Kalivah, symptoms of Kalivah. And there is a call Bhoomigita, the multiple things, from Bhagavatam you can see, Gopi Gita, Bhoomigita, Uddavagita. Even Lord Shiva also, Venu Gita, right, Venu Gita. Different, different, I mean, it's called various prayers, it's called Gita, you know. My sister name is also Gita, is she there or left? It's Sangita, thank you, right, Lord Shiva and Uma glorify market, various person, ultimately last candor. The topics of Srimad Bhagavatam summarize the glories of Srimad Bhagavatam. The glories of Srimad Bhagavatam, we have on various Vaishnavacharya is described, if you possess this scripture. Eight twelve cantos at your home, Krishna is with you, no inauspicious, amangala. Mangala Pradhamayana, everything is auspicious, if you have this Srimad Bhagavatam at your home. So this is what, see, glories of Srimad Bhagavatam, one second, it's not going moving somehow. Right, right, so again we have discussed eighteen thousand verses, twenty thousand places, pages of transcendental literature. Every day, just like I see this one, every day, even ten pages a day, ten to twenty minutes. We can, we can finish Bhagavatam in five years, just asking fifteen to twenty minutes of your time. Every day without fail, wait, every day just read ten pages, you can read this Bhagavatam five years. That means these many viruses, these many pastimes, you want to know. And again, Srimad Bhagavatam is a sparkless Purana, so these two personalities why we put here? Aruddha Mataji, Radhikaraman Babaji, these two personalities is Mataji. She has given this Bhagavatam training, this probably is childhood, you know. She has given, they never go to school, she has given all the knowledge. Whatever there in the Sriman Bhagavatam, she has given this knowledge to our kids. From the beginning of their childhood, and they, they are now. Homeschooling, right, homeschooling, homeschooling, in US, they are living, they are, they are in US, actually. This Mata is a very wonderful personality and she is giving topics on the Srimad Bhagavatam, how to give this Srimad Bhagavatam culture to our kids. Since she is practically proved, she is a successful parent, homeschooling parent. And their two kids, we met, actually when we were in US, we met both of them. And we are wonderful, they are well versed with scriptures, they are also giving this knowledge to their kids. And you know, from the beginning, this, this book of knowledge is anybody and there is no age limit. There is small children can able to read, a ninety feet, ninety five years, a very old man can read. Anybody can read this book and realize and perfect their life. Anyone who seriously tries to understand Srimad Bhagavatam properly hears and chants it with devotion, becomes completely liberated. We are completely liberated. Ah, Hare Krishna. Is mute, mute, we are done with the worship almost, right? So now, Prabhu, what is saying, Srimad Bhagavatam. How can such persons who have rendered ultimate service by explaining the path of self-realization in relation to. You can help me here, I am reading everything, Venkata Ramana, thank you so much for joining, thank you so much for joining, appreciate it.
Chala Bhagwani, Prabhuji.
Venkata Ramana is there, Venkata Ramana is my, every day, every week is attending these sessions. Thank you so much. Chapter, chapter. We are done, almost, yeah, Venkata Ramana, where are you there? Are you able to read, Venkata, are you able to read, this last verse, Prabhupada says, is a translation. How can, how can. Ah, yeah, please read it.
How can such persons who have rendered unlimited service by explaining the path of. Self-realization in relation to the Supreme Personality of Godhead. And whose explanations are given for our enlightenment with complete conviction and verdict evidence be repaired except. By folded palms containing water for their satisfaction. Such great personalities can be satisfied only by their own activities, which are distributed amongst human society out of their unlimited mercy.
Distribution, the Bhagavatam distribution he talks about, how this knowledge has to, has to have. Actually, this is Bhagavatam. Please mute, please mute yourself, please mute yourself, now almost done, this is almost done. Okay, so now let me stop sharing and show my thing, so actually. So we have gone through the glories of Srimad Bhagavatam, we have two, one is Telugu version, one is English version at our home. Normally, twelve cantos, right, there are eighteen books, comes in a box. Does all the pastimes of the Supreme Personality have guarded, it can be given to anybody as a gift. It's this, this book, and now, now without, so this knowledge coming from Guruparapara, Guruparapara system. So Srimad Bhagavatam is Amalapurana, that's a complete purity is there. And, and great Vaishnavacharya, what is saying? We worship actually, we worship in the altar actually, this book is from our altar, from our temple, Srimad Bhagavatam. So this, so it's a book, Krishna, now Krishna is with me. As a great Vaishnavacharya is what we are seeing, Krishna, when you have, when you have Srimad Bhagavatam at your home, Krishna is with you. Krishna is a farm, in the form of book form, there is no identical Krishna's personality, Krishna's book. Because everything is, everything talks about Supreme Personality have guarded, right? So everything talks about him, that means Krishna is with us, there is no difference. So now, so we are experiencing, we are in every year, every month, every month, so this is a. See, every month we have number of expenses. Right, we are, we are, you know, multiple, food eating, you know, nice apartment, we need, everything. We need, everything we are, by God's will, we all fortunate, we got the opportunity. And everyone now in your situation, if you look at. You see, everything, whatever this time to you, you get, you got it, you definitely get it, right? When you invite this kind of information, when you invite Shri Mahatma Bhagavatam, Bhagavat Gita at your home, what happens? Everything is auspicious, of course, see all bad qualities eventually go away. It is not going to be over time, overnight it won't go away, but when you, when you have. When you have, when you have these books, this scripture at your home, if you actually. Some worshippers learn, some devotees, they worship Bhagavatam, actually, it's a person, right? We as a great Vaishnavacharya, it's a person. So now, so now, as we are, now, actually, this is the Shri Mahatma Bhagavatam. We are in this month of December, in the All Iscontempt, we give, because in, in, in US or in India, December month means. It's a coming to an end of this year, right? So a lot of people, they buy for new year, new things, new, new, new clothes, new garments, new shoes, new. All the new utensils, they purchase a lot of things. So, as, as in Iskanth, in, this is the, our highest, as Prabhupada mentioned that. I guess, if we give this knowledge to people, general mass of people, with this knowledge is going to helpful for them. And it's a one time, it's not going to be a, every time, no, it's when you have this knowledge, you, you, when you have this, this books means you will read. Oh, these many books I have, Krishna is with me, what is the information it is inside, what is there, so we have to read, so, see. See Krishna consciousness, you all know, chanting Harer Nama, Harer Nama, Harer Nama, Kalam Naaste, Naaste, Arer Nama. Arer Nama chanting we are doing, right? Thank, thank you so much for accepting that nice gift, as I, this small token of love, I shared with you. chant, beat bass, chanting the holy names, you are doing, that's good thing. But without practice, without understanding this past tense, without, without going through the knowledge, it is no use. So that's the reason, Prabhupada mentioned in various lectures, one should possess these two books, like you know, Bhagavatam, this is Bhagavatam and Bhagavat Gita. So these two books can save you, can save you from the greatest danger. So this is one of these, Bhagavatam Bhagavat Gita, if you have done. Don't worry about Krishna is going to take care of your life, because you are inviting auspiciousness to your home, Mangalam. So that's what I want to say and I request everybody, please have this Shri Mahatma Bhagavatam sets. It's not going to, money is not big deal, money, anybody can, anyone can have. Money, Krishna arrangement, we will get money, but knowledge, we have knowledge, that's a more important. Money will come, Krishna, if you are good, you do good job, you'll good my good, you'll get good money. We are not asking you that much money, as a printing, so these are the books, eighteen books, right? Eighty thousand verses put in this, these books, all the relations, every verse and every Bhagavat, see we. In, in our childhood, we have seen small, small books, Bhagavatam book, Chinna, Chinna books. But it's not that, that's not the thing, lot of things are there in Bhagavatam, eighteen thousand verses, Prabhupada. So he has put sweat and blood in this book, in these books, he has written all the wonderful literature. For us, by, because by understanding, by going through, by reading through, we will be become purified. Our life become in different mode, different perspective. Eventually, eventually, we remember Krishna Antena Raya and Smriti, if we have this kind of books and readings. So my humble request is, I would like to offer you and please accept and we will see, I will talk to you more on this. And thank you so much for the opportunity on the Friday evening, you have many other enjoyments by watching cereals and different things. Thank you so much and giving the opportunity to speak, I am not qualified, but my guru is making me qualified to speak. I am not, I am just servant of my guru and whatever instructions I got, I am just sharing with you all, please forgive me. If I commit any mistakes and if I wrongly quoted or represented, please help, help me, correct me to understand. And thank you so much for your time and we will conclude with nursing prayer. Who is going to sing nursing prayer, Raju Prabhu, Neelam Mataji, your kids are ready to sing or? Hare Krishna. Okay, I will conclude, I will conclude with nursing prayer at the end of the session, right, so, we will, let me. Thank you so much for your attention and. Jaya Narasimha, Se Narasimha, Jaya Jaya Narasimha Deva. Jaya Narasimha, Se Narasimha, Jaya Jaya Narasimha Deva. Kaladesh, Jaya Patna Mukha, Patna Bhuna, Kaladesh, Jaya Patna Mukha, Patna Bhuna. Jaya Narasimha, Se Narasimha, Jaya Jaya Narasimha Deva. Ugram Veeram Mahavisnum, Jualanam Sarvato Mukham, Narasimham, Beeshanambadrham, Ruchun, Ruchun, Namamyam. Ugram Veeram Mahavisnum, Jualanam Sarvato Mukham, Narasimham, Beeshanambadrham, Ruchun, Ruchun, Namamyam. Ugram Veeram Mahavisnum, Jualanam Sarvato Mukham, Narasimham, Beeshanambadrham, Ruchun, Ruchun, Namamyam. Namaste Narasimhaaya, Kaladala, Nadaa, Hihi, Irannya, Vasih. Uvaakshaha, Piladang, Daanakala, Hihi, Nito, Narasimha, Palakho, Narasimha. Yeto, Yeto, Ya, Ni, Ta, To, Narasimha, Vaher, Narasimha, Rudhaye, Narasimha. Narasimha, Madhisharanam, Prapati, Tavakara, Tamalamare, Naatham. Atputa, Shringa, Dalitaa, Irannya, Gasyapu, Tanubrahunam. Keeshavadi, Nara, Hari, Rupa, Jeje, Gavisha, Haare. Jaya, Jaya, Gavisha, Haare, Jaya, Gavisha, Haare. Jaya, Gavisha, Haare, Nara, Hari, Rupa, Jeje, Gavisha, Haare. Jaya, Gavisha, Haare, Jaya, Narasimha, De, Narasimha, Deva. Narasimha, Deva, Jaya, Narasimha, Deva, Jaya, Nara, Hari, Rupa. Kalad, Marad, Jaya, Kalad, Marad, Jaya, Prabhu, Pana, Prabhu, Pana. Prabhu, Pana, Jaya, Prabhu, Pana, Jaya, Duro, Deva, Duro, Deva. Duro, Deva, Haare, Duro, Deva, Nita, Dora, Hari, To. Hari, Ho, Nita, Dora, Hari, To, Nita, Dora, Hari, To. Hari, To, Nita, Dora, Hari. Samasa Bhakta, Vidhna, Vinashak, Lakshmi, Nasyan, Swami, Bhagwanani, Ki, Jai, Bhakta, Shiro, Mani, Prahalat, Maharaj, Ki, Jai. Itai, Gauraprem, Anand, De, Jai, Om, Vishnu, Padha, Paramahamsa, Parivara, Jaya, Astro, Tare, Shata, Isdive, Em, Grace. Asi, Bhakti, Vira, Amma, Swami, Shri, La, Dho, Paal, Ki, Jai, Jai, Om, Vishnu, Padha, Paramahamsa, Parivara, Jaya. Astro, Tare, Shata, Isdive, Em, Grace, Bhakti, Dhan, Sera, Sagos, Amal, Shaba, Paal, Ki, Jai. Ananta, Koti, Vaishnav, Gunda, Ki, Jai, Naama, Charia, Shri, Raja, Stathur, Ki, Jai. Prem, Se, Kaho, Jai, Sri, Krishna, Chaitanya, Prabhu, Nitya, Ananda, Shri, Advaita, Gada, Dar, Shiva, Zadi, Gaur, Bhakta, Gunda, Ki, Jai. Shri, Shri, Rada, Krishna, Gaur, Gaur, Guna, Shama, Kunda, Rada, Pund, Magri, Gaur, Ganda, Ki, Jai. Dham, Dham, Ki, Jai, Nadi, May, Pura, Ganda, Ki, Jai, Jagad, Gura, Ganga, Ki, Jai. Gangga, Maya, Ki, Jai, Yemna, Maya, Ki, Jai, Bhakti, Devi, Ki, Jai, Kulasim, Maharani, Ki, Jai. Samave, Eda, Gaur, Bhakta, Gunda, Ki, Jai, Shri, Mahatma Bhagavatam, Ki, Jai, Shri, Mahatma Bhagavat Gita, Ki, Jai, Shri, Chaitanya, Chit, Na, Kita, Jai. Skand, Dang, Gud, Distribution, Ki, Jai, Skand, Good, Par, Light, Program, Ki, Jai. Itai, Itai, Gauraprem, Anand, De. All glory, Shri, Sriman, Krishna, All glory, Shri, Sriman, Krishna, All glory, Shri, Sriman, Krishna, All glory, Shri, Sriman, Krishna. All glory, Shri, Guru, Shri, Gaur, Ganda, All glory, Shri, Sriman, Krishna. Vancha, Pah, Patal, Veshna, Prapas, Viva, Eva, Chha. Ananta, Koti, Vaishnav, Gunda, Ki, Jai, Hare Krishna, Mahamand, Ki, Jai, Haryanam, Sangkit, Ram, Ki, Jai. Thank you so much, again, thank you so much for your time. And you are all Vaishna devotees, you please pray for me, so that I can, I can continue this service. For the pleasure of my guru and Prabhupada and Lord Shri Krishna, Supreme Personality of God. Thank you so much, Allah, Vima, Thank you so much, Venkateshwar Prabhu, thank you so much, Venkateshwar Prabhu, thank you so much. Divya, Marka, thank you so much, Neela Mataji, thank you so much, Raju Prabhu, thank you so much. Again, Vancha, Kalpata. Prupas, Hindi, Bhai, Eva, Ja, Padi, Dham, Gaur, Ganda, Vaishna, Pani, Haryanam, Sangkit, Ram, Ki, Jai, Hare Krishna, Mahamand.
Hare Krishna.
Thank you.
Thank you, Prabhuji, Jai Krishna, Hare Krishna. Dhanyavat.
Dhanyavat, thank you so much. Thank you.
Thank you, Prabhu.
Yeah, thank you, Venkateshwar Prabhuji, thank you, thank you all again, see you on Sunday, Sunday we will complete with the third session, Hare Krishna. Does God, who is God, third session, thank you.